Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman?
Here.
Alderman Barella?
Here.
Alderman Rucker?
Here.
Alderman Collins?
Here.
Alderman Moreauz?
Here.
Alderman Osteen?
I am here.
Woo-hoo, Mayor Harmanson.
I too am here. All right, we're going to start off this evening with the citizens' communication. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and board may also be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at OsageBeach.org no later than 10:00 AM on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizen communication section of the agenda. The Board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board also welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. If the board so desires, we can include the minutes from the Board of Alder meeting September 18th, 2025, the bills list from September 18th, 2025, and a new liquor license for, is it my gusto es? Am I saying that right?
Sure.
I actually, I actually looked it up earlier, and it was, my taste is, or my flavor is, my pleasure is. So, anyway, they are all in order, Alderman Hoffman.
It is indeed.
All right, if I don't have, do I have any comments and questions on any of those items? Alderman Rucker?
We are going to approve the minutes of the September 4th meeting.
September 4th, not 18th, thank you.
I think that's this meeting here.
Very good.
At least I got you all in the same room.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed as September 4th?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda is approved. Now we'll start off with financial update with the city administrator, Devon Lake, please.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. Our sales tax for September is 1.3% under where we were at this time last year, and 2.4% under what we have budgeted, but our overall revenues are under budget by 7%, but our expenditures are under budget by 23%. So, we're looking good so far for this year.
All right, anybody have any comments or questions for Devon? Very good, thank you Devon. We have a few items of unfinished business. First is Bill 25-46, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance 24-93, adopting the 2025 annual operating budget by removing and adding job titles within the fiscal year 2025 employee pay plan for Public Works. This is a floor amendment, the second reading. All right, Jeff Fisher, Public Works Director.
Sorry, Mayor Alderman. I think this is a carry, this is a second reading from a May meeting. It actually was the same night you appointed me as the Director of Public Works. I believe we want to suggest carrying that later in the new business section till after the presentation on personnel. Did I miss anything, City Administrator?
We had, we think this would be better to be voted on after item F on the agenda, since he's going to be giving a presentation on the organizational structure of Public Works, and I think that would flow better. So if the board is okay with that, can we move that vote down to below F?
So this is not going to be a second reading then?
It will be a second reading.
Okay, but we're right, at this point in time, we're just asking if anybody has any objection to move it to later in the program?
Yes.
Basically, okay.
Do we have to make an official motion to? No?
No, you don't.
Okay.
I'll just note that it's moved.
It's usually just asking, if nobody has any problem, we just do it.
Does anybody have any problems with that? All right, very good, we'll move that on then. And where are we going to put that Devon? I'm looking here at the...
Right after the presentation.
Okay.
I remember F.
Gotcha. Okay.
Right after 2590, then there's a presentation.
Page 50.
Very good. All right, we're going to move on, Bill 25-80, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, repealing Chapter 625 Massage Establishments, Article 1 in general, Article 2 business licenses, Article 3 massage therapist permit as set forth, second reading, Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board. Don't have anything to add, happy to answer your questions.
Alderman Hoffman?
Just because I wasn't here last time, Tara, is this what you and I had discussed a few months ago, and we were going to change it, now we're just eliminating it? Is that right?
Yes, because the state regulates it so high and so hard that there's really no reason, we don't have enough people, we don't have anybody on staff that knows enough about that to regulate it, so we just get rid of it. In general, they'll still have to get a business license, we just don't have to go through the whole process of getting, having a public hearing, getting the police chief to inspect it, getting the building inspector to go through all that, it's just getting rid of it in general.
And we just adopt state policy?
Yes.
We're just going to let the state do the regulation.
Excellent, okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
I still stand by my assertion that I feel like we should have something in writing, basically just stating that we basically are deferring to the state regulations regarding this, just to cover our...
We don't have that in writing for any other profession, you know, we don't require, you know, attorneys to show, you know, to, we don't have anything that says that, you know, we defer to the state on regulation of attorneys or professional engineers or barbers, all of which are state licensed, by the way, and there's like 200 and something state licensed profession, so by not doing it, we are deferring to the state, and as you'll see in item, let's see, it's coming up, the item F, we're going, we will still have the ability that if, if we become aware that somebody's massage license has been revoked or P E N license or barber license, and we want to take action, we will, item F will give us the opportunity to do that, but it's more generic, it's not specific to this one particular industry. Why we have this whole industry spelled out in our ordinances is beyond me, so...
Yeah, I understand a lot of these different areas that we defer to the state, but since we're moving all ordinances and regulation from city, I still feel like we should have something that, instead of just removing everything, which makes it sound like it's a free-for-all, since it's not regulated at all, that we should follow it up just to have something arrive.
It's not.
That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, and the state regulating, state regulations trump ours anyways, so...
Okay.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Moreauz, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Moreauz?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, second reading, Bill 25-80 passes. Next we have Bill 25-81, ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter 610 Peddlers and Solicitors, Section 610.170, additional requirements for food trucks as set forth, second reading, and I'm going to turn this over to Kevin Rucker, please. Alderman Rucker?
I'd just like to ask, or, or, or I should say ask, excuse me, I would like to thank the two people that called me and, and one email that I have here that I'm going to read, and I appreciate the fact that you hear from their citizens. One was very positive to be in favor of this, one was concerning and actually was against it, and after the conversation, I said, "Well," and they said, "I don't know." So I don't know if they were in favor or against it after our conversation, but at least they reached out because they didn't understand the reasonings and stuff, so I appreciate the fact that they did that. But I do want to take this opportunity to, just, just to read to you a couple of statements from an email that I received. "I feel that our local government should never impose restrictions on an activity just because it is too close to a competitor. If the property is zoned properly for the activity, there should be no problem. It isn't right for my neighbor to limit the use of my property when it is properly zoned." And I'd like to reiterate that no other industry benefits from a proximity restriction. And I would just tell you that that's from Mr. Lee Schuman, who was on the Citizens Committee that recommended, that the mayor had mentioned that he was very much in favor of following what the committee wanted, but this is a gentleman who was on the committee that was not in favor of that, so, just wanted to put that out there, and that's all I have.
All right. Alderman Hoffman?
All right, so I have several questions, bear with me, I wasn't here last week. One, it is still currently $500 for six months, is that correct?
No.
What is correct?
For food truck, it's $500 for a year.
Okay.
Peddlers and vendors is $500, six months.
Okay, and we can't move that down to, say, $100 for a year?
No, you cannot, not without the vote of the people.
So, we would have to put it back out to the vote of the people to move to, put it on the ballot, shall food trucks be moved from 500 to 100 for a year?
No, you can put it back on the ballot to have any peddler, solicitors out on the ballot, is what the ballot language said.
It's messy, is the, I mean...
I know it's messy, but now's the time to hear it, I'm sorry.
You have to, then if you want to change the $500 fee, you can extend the fee for it, the, the language doesn't say anything about extending it to 10 years, three years, whatever, just says $500, and then whoever wrote the ordinance after that election, put it in for the six months. So if you want to do it for two years, $500 for two years, you could do that, you just can't give away the 500.
I think if you want to discuss putting it on the ballot, we can have that conversation, but like, we need to talk through scenarios.
Sure, totally understand that.
What else is going along with changing the $500?
So, that being said, we can't, we can't remove food trucks from peddlers, they have, it has to stay locked into that, or we have to put that out to a vote?
That's messy too. I, I mean, that's a, if, if we're talking, I mean, that, that's a very different change and, I hate to give you the, it depends, but it, I mean...
Okay.
I'd rather talk through scenarios, you know...
Okay, and what we're, what we're voting on here tonight is to eliminate the distance, correct?
Just, just the distance.
Okay, so, I had someone on that same committee who did vote for it, and they did recommend that there was a distance, and Carthage, Missouri, 50 feet, Union, Missouri, 500 feet, Kansas City, anywhere from 50 to 200 depending on the city, Camatton has a restriction, Legosark is 150. So, there, there is lots of precedence for other communities putting a distance on food trucks from brick and mortar establishments. So, I, I understand that maybe we should not allow other businesses to approve or disapprove of that, however, I believe that the distance we put in before, it was recommended by Citizens' Advisory. I want it to be a fair, equal playing field for everyone, I want food trucks to come here, I want to get that price down to somewhere that makes sense for them, but that also means it needs to be fair and balanced for our brick and mortar restaurants that have been here for 30 or 40 years dumping tax money and being part of our community, and I think we have a responsibility to protect them within the, within the law. So, and I believe that there is another proposal out there from Alderman Collins, am I correct?
It's coming.
It's coming. So, that being said, and from what I have seen and heard from, from Cole and from Rebecca, is that this is something that, that is a pretty good solution to our problem. So that being said, I am firmly voting against this tonight, and in hopes that we have a better solution in the future, but I, I stand by what I've said from the very beginning. I, I, every, this is not what the, when the food truck organization came up here, it was the money that they wanted down, they're used to operating with restrictions on distance, so I don't see any problem with standing our ground with that in the ordinance.
Alderman Osteen?
All right, so just to clarify with the city, we keep referring to this as food trucks, but food trucks is not its own entity, correct?
We...
Food trucks are under a blanket peddlers and vendors license.
We left them in the peddler and vendor chapter, but we carved them out as a separate class of peddlers, essentially. There's, they're a...
Because they're not a brick and mortar, they're not going to file for a business license because they're not a brick and mortar, they move around, okay? So you had to, if you look at what the, the election ballot back in 93, if you read it, the intent of it is, is to keep food trucks, make them pay, because they're not brick and mortar, they don't have the expense of the utilities, they don't have the expense of the land, that was what the intent, if you read the intent of what it was, that's why they chose that, they voted on the $500. So, if you look at where the peddlers and solicitors, they put that in there in the very beginning of the, that ordinance, so the only way you could get around to not charging them the $600 was Cole char, carved it out and made it its own separate section, which allowed you to give it to a different, a different value or a different price for an extended period of time, other than every six months, for a peddler or a solicitor.
Okay, so, once again, I'm trying to clarify this, so if this ordinance were to pass or not pass, this is specific to food trucks, it has no bearing on other vendors or peddlers' licensed entities?
Correct, just food trucks.
Food trucks only.
All we're talking about tonight is food trucks.
And I think that's part of the issue that we've had as a board, is because food trucks, we categorize them as vendors, peddlers, but we're trying to carve them out as something separate, which I probably think further discussions about being more in-depth on separating that from just generic vendors and peddlers, et cetera. My whole issue on this, and I've said this many times, it, it wasn't food trucks per se, it, it was the whole idea of all vendors and peddlers, et cetera, and what was being proposed previously was that we were allowing third parties, other businesses that had joined the business that wants to have a food truck on their property, to make that decision. So we're basically giving the governing rights to somebody within their legal rights on their own property, we're giving that decision-making to a third party. That was my big issue with all this, and it wasn't specifically food trucks, it was all vendors, peddlers, farmers market, roadside booths, et cetera.
This only affects, so legally today, if a, a traveling seafood truck, you know, you know, farmer's market type whatever can set up at Wicked Willie's right next door to Van Hook's, and there's not a dang thing Van Hook's can do about it. But a food truck can't set up a Van Hook's because, unless Willie says it's okay. That's, that's, and I'm using those two just because they share a parking lot, and that's the easiest one to think of, but same goes for Papo's and Wobbly Boots, Damanico's and Wobbly Boots, you get the idea. Anything that's neighbors.
So, to read what we just stated, so Coral Reef can't have a food truck without, well, or, we could really sign it off in it, but we could really put up a fish market or a vendor stand selling seafood without the authorization of Coral Reef?
Correct.
Bingo. Okay. And, and the other example I gave is, you know, for instance, the mayor sells sandwiches, so he, he can have food trucks because he can permit himself to have food trucks, Latitude needs his permission, but Latitude, so, so he doesn't need Latitude's permission to have a food truck, but Latitude needs his permission to have a food truck, give another example, so, that, that is just how it works. Well, he needs the state's permission.
Alderman Moreauz?
Well, first of all, I commend Alderman Rucker for, for bringing this forward, and after a lot of food for thought, so to speak, and research, I truly think it should, we should be more explicit in some more details of what we do want with this, with this ordinance. And like Alderman Hoffman had commented about, it went back, we said 200 feet. Well, that's what everybody agreed on initially, but, you know, on the other hand, if there's another way to be more explicit with a, with a implement type special use, special, special tax or something, that they don't have to have it, or special location, okay, whatever, whatever is going to be fair to the local business, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I feel that we need this desperately, and the other thing that bothers me, and I don't know how it works, and maybe I'm wrong, but I want to be sure that when these food trucks or vendors, whoever, come into our area, and obviously they have to have licenses, do they pay the sales tax to Osage Beach, because they're collecting sales tax? I don't want it to go to their town.
That's what they're supposed to do.
That's what they're supposed, but how can we enforce that?
The issue we've had is that most of them didn't, you know, that was the food truck festival problem, was that most of them didn't, so...
I don't know how to work, I don't know how to control...
Well, part, part of the enforcement is if we catch them not doing it, I mean, it's the same, we've got, we've got business, brick and mortar businesses in town that don't pay their sales tax either, we, but when we catch them, you know, they get turned in, and part of the solution for that is coming up, that's, that's the enforcement ordinance coming up in new business, that at least gives us one more tool to use in that situation, but enforcement and the 200-foot thing that's on the agenda tonight are two different, are really just two separate issues.
Well, with all being said, like I said, I really would like to have a more implicit of some details regarding this ordinance, so I really can't, I can't vote for the way it's worded tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Collins?
So just to kind of go back to what Alderman Hoffman said, I, I agree there needs to be a change, and also what Alderman Osteen said, I, I agree there needs to be a change, we should not be treating food trucks differently than a seafood tent or any other peddler and vendor, and I have had conversations with Cole, and I think that we've got the outline of a plan to resolve at least most of these issues, if not all of them, that everybody has brought, brought up, so I have to vote no on making this change until we have the opportunity to explore that and hopefully bring that up, and it can resolve all of this on a permanent basis.
Alderman Barella?
I, I am in favor of this change, I think, I think what we're getting caught up on, we're talking about two different issues, and there's a distance issue, and there's us getting our sales tax issue, you know, and so this is what's on the agenda tonight for the distance issue, and I think what Colin, Alderman Collins is working on will help on us getting the sales tax portion of it, so I think there's two, two different things there, but I would like to make a motion to go ahead and move on with it.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, wasn't, just as a response to Alderman Osteen, yeah, I agree with you, we, you know, we were looking for a compromise when we did this, what was it, a year ago, because the board was very fractured on it, it's a, it's a tough, this is a tough subject. So, we came up with a solution, and maybe it wasn't the best one, and I would agree that having other businesses saying yes or no probably wasn't the best scenario, but by leaving the distance in and then implementing Alderman Collins's idea that, that her and Cole and, and Devon have worked on, it, it solves that by giving them special uses for certain amount of times, and then the board can also waive it. So I think we should stick with what we have and then use Alderman Collins's plan to improve it, so that's why I'll be voting no tonight.
Anyone else? Seeing no further questions, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
I think you already had one from Alderman Barella.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you said I will be making, I apologize, sorry, we have a motion.
Question?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Osteen, roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
No.
Alderman Moreauz?
No.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
You have a time here.
Yes, well, wait, I'm not saying yes yet.
Oh, all right, that was done.
No, I, I had every indication that it would come down to my vote, so I knew how I'd be voting going into this, like I do most of the time, unless there's some swaying information to change my mind, and I, and that did not occur. And I'm going to be voting no on this, and, but I do want to tell you why, is because I support our Citizens Advisory Committee. I appointed them two, three years ago with this task, is one of the first things that I did, they spent a lot of time and effort, we had two people on that board who have brick and mortars, they're the ones that came up with the 200-foot rule, they came up with what they thought was a good policy for the food trucks, they had food truck vendors come in and speak with them, they came up with a plan, they gave it to the board, and our board, being opinionated, which is a good thing, didn't like what they came up with, took some things, took some, some things out, that's how we got here today, so, the reason I'm voting no is because I'm going to support what the Citizens Advisor Committee put in there, and that was a 200-foot rule. And I look forward to what Alderman Collins has to say, bring to the board. All right, so Bill 25-81 fails. Next we have Bill 25-82, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number four for a time extension with Missouri Highway's Transportation and Commission Enhancement Fund for Highway 42 tap grant, ADA project, second reading, City Administrator Devon Lake.
Mayor and members of the board, I have nothing further, but I hope you have, happy to answer any questions.
Comment your questions to the board. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
So move.
Alderman Moreauz, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Moreauz?
Yes.
Alderman, okay. Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, Bill 25-82 passes. Next we have Bill 25-83, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter 125 Human Resource System Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 125.240, other employee benefits as set forth, second reading, Assistant City Administrator April White, please.
Yes, mayor, members of the board, again, just aligning the ordinance with practice.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, a second, Alderman Rucker, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Moreauz?
Yes.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, Bill 25-83 passes. Moving on to new business, first item, we have a presentation for the SS4A grant presentation, and who do you say was taking this?
I can.
Yeah, I put it on the agenda, there you go.
And so Ashley with Wilson and Company, who has been selected for the SS4A Grant Action Plan, is here to give you guys an update and to discuss some striping ideas that we have for the Osage Beach Parkway Micro Seal that will be taking place in the next couple of weeks.
I'm Ashley Winchell, I'm the project manager.
If you don't mind, take a microphone, that, that'll, that'll get the people at home to hear.
Yeah, and then I don't have to yell.
Thank you.
So again, I'm Ashley Winchell, I'm with Wilson and Company, I'm the project manager for the, what we're calling the Osage Beach Vision Zero Action Plan, and I'll talk a little bit tonight about what Vision Zero is. If we can go to the next slide. Dorothy was not able to be here tonight, she has a sick kid, so I'm covering for both of us, so it's just me tonight, again, Ashley Winchell, if we can go to the next slide. So project background and goals, next slide. So what is the SS4A program? It was approved by the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. It provides funding for cities to complete safety action plans, which then make them eligible for safety, roadway safety improvements or infrastructure improvements. The focus of the program is to look at ways to reduce or eliminate serious injury in fatal crashes or accidents. So really looking at, how can we make sure people get home at night when they're driving on our roadways, walking on our sidewalks, or moving throughout the community? It's not just focused on vehicles, it's focused on all the different ways folks get around. And so one of the ways we do this is we use crash data to look at where are people getting in serious injury accident or fatal accidents in Osage Beach? And then we start to look at what's causing those crashes. So a lot of times, crashes or accidents seem random, but really what we found is that if you look at the data and you really start digging in, sometimes you can find that there are reasons why those are happening, and there could be design solutions or different things that could be put in place to reduce those crashes, or even to reduce the severity of those crashes. So it does look at a vision zero and safe systems approach. So vision zero really looks at, you know, that traditional approach of, we can't prevent accidents, they're all random, people drive perfectly, you know, all of these things, and it looks at more of the approach of, a lot of crashes, you know, there's reasons why they happen, maybe the way the road is designed, or something's not as visible as it could be. It also recognizes that we aren't perfect drivers, that people, you know, make mistakes when they're driving, and those mistakes sometimes can have really serious consequences. And then it, that leads us into the safe system approach. So it looks at safer people, how can we make sure that people are driving safer when they're walking, that they're, they're using safe behaviors when they're riding their bike, et cetera? How can we make sure that people moving through the system are being safer? It looks at safer vehicles, so that's usually more at a federal level of like, how can we regulate vehicles in a way that includes more safety technology, but even from a city, what is some safety technology that could be put on fleet vehicles? Look at safer speeds, so the faster a vehicle's driving when there is a crash, the more likely there is to be a serious injury or fatality, so are the speeds that people are driving safe? Looking at safer roads, so are roadways designed safely, are there the right signage, the right striping, et cetera? And then post-crash care, so when everything fails and there is a crash, are people getting to a trauma center, getting the right care they need, so that they're more likely to survive a crash? Go to the next slide. So we did want to talk a little bit about the initial crash data that we've looked at for Osage Beach. So the grant requires us to look at five years of crash data, so we're looking at 2020 to 2024. And what we're really seeing, so we look at all crashes, and then we look at fatal and serious crashes, just to see if there's any trends there. And so we've identified hotspots along Osage Beach Parkway, east, on the east side, Passover Road, and Osage Beach Parkway, the east side of the Grand Glaze Bridge, Jeffries Road, and Highway 54 interchange, Route KK and Highway 54 interchange, and the southernmost interchange at Highway 54 and Osage Beach Parkway. So this is for all crashes. So we've also dug in a little bit deeper into just the fatal and serious crashes, so if you go to the next slide, really seeing those fatal and serious crashes in kind of similar areas. So we'll start to look at the crash reports and see if there's commonalities, so are they all rear-end crashes? That might lead us to certain solutions, or identifying certain problems that may be happening there, are people getting T-boned when they're making a left turn? So we can really start to look at what's causing that crash, and then what are some of the design interventions that could reduce those crashes? And so then in that five-year time period, there were five fatal crashes in Osage Beach, and 47 serious injury crashes. And serious injury crash usually means like, someone was taken away in ambulance, they potentially had broken bones, internal bleeding, that sort of thing, usually not something you, you walk away from. So we can go to the next slide. And then another thing that we look at in the grant is what's called a vulnerable road user crash. That's usually like someone that is walking, biking, folks that aren't in the protection of a vehicle. So if you think about when you're driving a car, you've got like, a ton of steel around you, when you're walking on a sidewalk, you don't have that same level of protection. And so sometimes there are additional interventions needed to make sure that pedestrians and cyclists are safe. So there's been in total seven pedestrian crashes in the last five years, four of those being minor injury, three of them being serious injury, and a lot of them are concentrated in the area between Highway KK and Nichols Road. So when we were looking at those, a lot of people potentially crossing the street, maybe not at an intersection, and getting hit by a car there. And so starting to think about ways to encourage people to use crosswalks, or thinking about how people can safely get across the street. We go to the next slide. We will also be doing road safety audits. So a road safety audit, or an RSA, is an evaluation of roadways' design and operations for potential hazards. So we'll be looking at areas around the schools, and then we'll also be looking at Osage Beach Parkway, and then we'll be using the data to identify if there's any other locations we should be looking at that aren't either near the schools or on Osage Beach Parkway. And so we'll look at traffic counts, we'll look at crash data, and we'll also look at the, the physical design of the road, and see if there's interventions that could be made to increase safety. And, and one of the things that we always look for are simple interventions. Sometimes there's something called proven countermeasures, where essentially like, sometimes a sign can result in a 50% reduction in crashes. So looking to for what are some really simple things that could be done that could reduce crashes? We go to the next slide. The grant also encourages public engagement, and so we pulled together a public engagement plan to find as many ways as possible to reach out to the Osage Beach community, and we recognize that it's a unique community, since you have a lot of summer visitors, and don't always have folks that are full-time residents. And so we're looking at different ways that we can make sure that we're getting information out to people, and catching people where they are. So our main goals are to make sure the community understands the project, to reach a wide range of the community, so people who live here, people who visit, people who work here, thinking about all the people who make up the community and travel throughout Osage Beach, and then finding ways to make sure we incorporate public feedback in the final plan. So if someone spends time talking to us, we want to make sure that that is reflected in the plan. So on the next slide, goes into what we're looking at, we'll be meeting with the Safety Action Committee, we'll be doing presentations like this throughout the project to keep you all up to date on what's happening. We will be launching a community survey and website. The, the website also includes a map where folks can drop pins and tell us what's going on there, so if they have certain spots in the city they want us to know about, we can look at that. We'll be tabling pop-up events, like at Fall Fest, just to, sometimes when folks are out and about, they, they may not want to go to a public meeting, but they'll come and talk to you at a booth, so we can come in and get more information from them there. And then we'll also be working on a public open house. If you can go to the next slide. So our next steps, we'll be wrapping up, looking at data, and creating a vision for the plan this fall. We'll be looking at analysis and recommendations in spring, so what are some specific projects that could be put in place to increase safety? There's a demonstration project, so the grant included temporary installment of bike lanes between highway, or Route KK and Nichols Road, and so that's planned for the summer, looking at delivering a draft plan in the fall, and then in front of you all in winter of next year for consideration of adoption. So I am happy to answer any questions you all may have, and then, yeah, any questions you have, or any ideas you have for the plan, or specific areas you want us to know about.
Alderman Hoffman.
I have, I have two questions. First, great work, and thank you very much for all your time and effort on this. I noticed in that, one of those first slides, it seemed like the hotspots are where there's the most traffic. Is there data that kind of separates out it just being high volume? Is there a way to do that? Like the lake roads, some lake roads are worse than others, stuff like that?
I think what we would look at, I mean, the, the traffic is something definitely to look at, so was, are the volumes causing it? I think obviously the more traffic, the more, you know, people are there, the more chances for a crash, but we can also start to look at, what's the, like, are the, is it the same crash happening over and over and over again? So that might mean that something in the design of that area is resulting in people doing the same thing, and then they're doing the same thing, which is causing the same crash. And so that's one thing we will take into consideration, is if the same thing keeps happening, is there something we can do to stop that from happening, or reduce the severity of the crashes when that's happening? And then a lot of times too, what we found is, you know, some of the fatal and serious injury crashes may be the same as all crashes happening, and so if interventions are put in place to reduce those, sometimes it reduces all crashes, just because the same thing's not happening over and over again.
Okay, and my second question was, there was a, there was a little discussion on the board about, you know, are we spending money on a grant, and then we get the data and it just goes on a shelf, and we don't get anything out of it, other than there's information, which is great, but then how does it really get applied? Do you, are you part of the process to help take that information and, and get it to become application in the city, or is that solely on us? I, I'm just curious.
So what this plan will include as a list, and, and what we're required to help you all with, is pull together a list of prioritized projects related to the data for roadway safety. So you all will come out of this plan with a list of, here are the different projects that we can seek funding for. So there's that side of it, that, that will at least get you set up for that, and we'll try to do as much as possible as we can within the constraints of this grant to set you up for future dollars. We also can help look at ways that if the city's already spending money on certain improvements, can safety improvements be embedded into those? So if you're looking at, at adopting a capital improvement plan, are there certain ways that safety projects could be put into maintenance budget, or into the other budgets? So into the capital improvement budget, so like, if you're repaving a street, can it be striped in a way that's safer? Or could it include certain things that increase safety? So I think it's twofold, of there's simple things that the city could do, that you could embed into what you're already doing, and then there's projects that we can help to identify that would be successful for grant applications.
Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Alderman Rucker?
Yes, we've, a couple of years ago, or maybe longer, but sometime back, we kind of opened up the door a little bit more for golf carts on our city streets. And I know that this is going to be looking at bicycle traveling, okay? How do those two mesh? Can the, you know, the areas that you, that you, you work with and throughout the country, are the, are the go-kart, I mean, the, the golf carts and the four-wheeler, are they allowed in the bicycle lanes, or is this a legal thing? Are, and I'm kind of throwing it out there, I'm looking at our attorney, our, our police chief, and, and, you know.
It would probably be a good conversation for us to have with the city attorney about, about how that's arranged, because, yeah, there are rules about what can use a city street, and whether it's street legal, and I'll say that this is the first community we've worked with that golf carts are, are part of the transportation network, so I know that's something that we'll need to work on more, and understand better.
And it's a, it's a good segue, we would also, of course, include PD in any of those kinds of discussions. In, on your, in front of you, we placed an exhibit regarding Noby Parkway on the west side, to suggest, since we're putting a new surface on it, and going to be striping it, that we could consider this, and this was born out of this study already, instead of a pure bike lane, it could be a multi-purpose lane, or lanes. And while we're out there putting a new surface on it, we could stripe it accordingly. So it's, it is sudden, so I apologize, but this is how sometimes the work comes together, and ideas are created. So it is something for discussion, and, and we'll field any questions, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would say, I, I'd want to do some research, but your golf carts are motorized vehicles, and I, I think honestly, having golf carts in a bike lane is probably more dangerous than having golf carts in a vehicle lane. So I mean, if, if we're talking about prioritizing golf carts as opposed to bicycles, and then we don't have that many bicycles, so I mean, I think that's, that's not necessarily a bad choice, you almost like, almost might be better off doing something like, striping it as essentially a shoulder, and then dictating that golf carts drive on the shoulder, or something like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that.
But we don't, currently, golf carts aren't allowed on Osage Beach Parkway.
Correct.
Right.
Currently, golf carts aren't allowed on a roadway that's posted over 30.
Correct.
I thought, I thought we won't.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Okay.
There's some out there doing that.
All right, let's, wait, let's organize here, I'm sorry. Alderman Rucker?
Just, just, there, we do have some of the ATVs out there on the Parkway.
The side-by-sides are allowed, but the golf cart is not.
Yeah, sorry, we, we were saying golf carts, and I was thinking of the side-by-sides, you know, the razors, the, the.
What's, what do you call a side-by-side?
It's a UTV.
Lifted UTVs, they might have, they might have three seats per row.
But they typically, years ago, were, were designed to go off the road.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I call that an ATV, sorry.
Yeah, but yeah, we're, they were talking golf carts, I was picturing.
ATV is you straddle like a motorcycle seat, a UTV is you sit in like a motor vehicle.
You have a roll cage.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're talking about something like that, you almost be better off saying UTVs, you know, one lane for vehicular traffic, one lane for UTV traffic, and then sidewalks for the pedestrians.
Yeah.
Seems maybe like a better way to go than, than them trying to tell, than saying it's a bike lane, but UTVs can use it, or a golf cart can use it, because.
My whole reason of bringing it up was because of this right here, that, that kind of discussion, as they move forward with bringing back suggestions to us.
No, no final decisions tonight, but it's, it'll put, definitely put it on our radar to, to sort out, and to sort out what we can and can't do, because I, I don't know what we can make, what we can mix and match under state law.
Yeah, and the exhibit you have in front of you, it says bike lane, it would be walking, biking, community use. You could have it on one side, you could have it on both sides, but one of the things is, now you have three lanes of traffic instead of five, it's a very wide Parkway that doesn't have much traffic anymore. And in fact, it's a posted 45, he says yet, so that'd be good.
We do have a, I mean, it's going to be the escape traffic for 54 West from the Oasis and Hotel, anything that happens on Bridgeport, so that's something that we need to, to keep in, in mind, is from Jeffries to Case Road is going to be the escape traffic going west for 54. So we'll have all that traffic. So anything from, from Case on, you know, is probably something, but at least from Jeffries to Case, we need to be very careful what we do by what the traffic construction.
It is, by the way, I was intrigued with the data, it's posted 45, and 85 percentile is 43. So most people are driving under the speed limit, which is.
That's me.
It's kind of, which is kind of odd, because it's a very wide Parkway.
Mayor.
So I guess if.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On that note, with that, with the intersection of 54 and Case Road actually being MODOTS right away, we may have to check with them as well, or MODOT maintained, for their approval.
Yeah, right.
And yes, to answer Cole's question, my minivan does go 45. Alderman Collins.
On the handout you gave us with the bike lanes on here, are you just talking about just west of the bridge, or both sides of just west?
Just west of the bridge.
Thank you.
Could I ask one last question?
Alderman Hoffman.
Will, will your data break out, we've only, will it break out side-by-sides and, and golf cart stuff?
Yeah, so we look at, the police report should say what type of vehicle was in that crash, and I think that the UTV, ATV conversation will be really important, because, so the state does a statewide safety plan, and it has different emphasis areas it looks at for safety, and UTVs and ATVs have become such a big thing in Missouri, that they've actually started to add statewide plans for improving safety. And so I think, you know, with Osage Beach being somewhat unique in terms of golf carts and the UTVs and ATVs, that there's a lot of opportunity to use what the state is starting to. to look at and think about how it could be applied here. And then I think we can also start to look at maybe some other communities that have a lot of golf cart traffic and see how they integrate those into their, their transportation network.
Chief, we do require them, they have to have seat belts. Is that correct or no?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next item of business, we're going to move on to Chief Davis for the presentation for fiscal, fiscal year 2026 police 911 ambulance and emergency management capital purchases. Chief Davis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is a, items that we'll be discussing in the capital purchase for fiscal year 26 on the, for the ambulance department, we're looking at putting in the budget again, the replacement ambulance for our current 2015 ambulance that we have. Replacement cost is $400,000. It, it goes up each year by a significant, significant amount. Also, there is almost a year to a year and a half, maybe two years backlog. So if we order it in '26, there's a good chance we may not get it till '28. Along with that, we would need to make modifications to our ambulance bay downstairs to accommodate the new ambulance. One size, one side of our bay is a little bit smaller than the other side just due to the, the building design from when we built the building. So that's approximately $25,000. That's the two items for the ambulance. The police department, we're looking at replacing six police department vehicles. All but one of those six is over 10 years old. Every one of them will have over 100,000 miles at the time we replace it. We're proposing, and we would like to add an, an additional vehicle for 20, in 2026. Our police department is at full staff now, we're hot seating vehicles, running the mileage up. If we have any in the shop, sometimes we're, we're at a deficit for vehicles. The proposal is to do four utility vehicles and put three trucks in the fleet this year to try them out to see if, if they're good and, you know, adequate for patrol coverage. We're also, would like to request a drone that will assist us, you know, when we're looking for lost people, search warrants, and additional stuff like that. We'll be able to, this is something that we could, we propose utilizing with Public Works, the, the locator, you know, multiple departments. Obviously it'd be a priority to law enforcement if we need it, but we can spread that amongst the city. Even Holly, the public information officer, could use it for different things, parks. We do need to replace an evidence, or the refrigerator in the evidence room, our refrigerator downstairs. You know, if we have evidence that has to be kept frozen or cold and we lose that, that's potential for losing cases. Ours now, we're about to outgrow it. And this one is kind of set up, it would have an alarm on it to let us know if, you know, we're having issues with it before we lose everything in it. And then the last thing is the replacement of 14 laptop computers. This would be half of our fleet, or half of our inventory of computers, each officer's and issued a laptop to use. And this would be something that we would look at, they're, they're about five years use out of them before their end of life. And this would be replacing these in the fourth quarter of next year and basically putting them in service in '27. But it would get us, and then we would replace the other half of it in '27. Total cost for capital items for the police department, $546,903. And then the final department is the 911 center. We have an upgrade that has to be done every two years. It's $14,492.50. We pay for this biannually, so we split it every two years. So that's a cost of $72.47.
Any questions? Alderman Hoffman.
I got like three questions. This is stuff that you and I did talk about up at MML, but I think it's a pretty good spot to bring it up. The cars, I know Jeff and Alderman, Ostate and I, our public works director, Jeff, had a, had a conversation last, maybe it was two weeks ago. And I'm just wondering, you know, I know the, the, the police vehicles get used hard and I would say they get used harder than any, anything else we have in the fleet probably. And if there's one vehicle we don't want to break him down, it's them. So I'm just wondering if there's a good way, whether it's leasing or, or getting on a better buying plan of getting these things flipped at about 80,000 miles, three to four years, something like that. What's your thoughts on that?
I think that would be ideal. We used to, at one time we had a program where we were rotating the mod at 50,000 miles. That's been several years ago. We used to do four vehicles a year. So that got us there. And then the recession hit, some other things hit, where we dropped down to two. Then we had several years that we, two or three years in a row, I shouldn't say several, two or three years in a row, we didn't replace anything. And we've just never been able to catch up. They just keep, you know, adding miles to it.
Okay. Jeff's given, then you wanted to add to that or?
Just that, as we discussed, my experience with a private partner is, has been excellent. You know, the first priority in fleet management when it comes to replacement of assets is replacing them before you start spending a lot of money on them, right? The second priority is to replace them when you can make the most off of them. And we can generally do that well, but we can't be great at it. And there are, there's at least one private source that can be great at it because their selling power is much greater than anybody else that I've ever encountered. City governments or government in general can buy low and that private partner can sell higher than anybody else and at the right time. It's hard for us to monitor the market like that, that's just not our business, so we can't be great at it. And so if the market says over a short period of time that you should replace an asset after three years, because that's where your highest value is going to be, then that's when you do it. If it's six years, then that's when you do it. And it doesn't matter how old or how many miles are on it. Because at the end of the day, you're, you're trying to buy low and sell high as you can. And then minimize your maintenance costs. So that's, that's been my experience.
Well, I guess I would just suggest that we've got, I don't know, we've gotten three weeks until we start budget stuff. You know, be, be good to have whatever we think is our best plan moving forward at come budget time and, you know, I'm going to be willing to support whatever you guys are thinking on that. Obviously you're better qualified to make that determination. But I just want to get this right. I feel like we've been kind of spinning our wheels for a few years on this. I'd just like to get it right this time. Second question was, how many, do we have two ambulances? How many do we have and how old are they?
We have two ambulances now. And we have, our oldest is a 2015, 2015. And then our new one is a 23.
So are you wanting to buy a new one and then sell the old one, move the one, our new, whatever our newest one is, is to like the reserve one and then start using the new one whenever it gets here?
Correct. What we do now is we rotate a month, each month, we use, one month we use the 15, the next month we use the 23.
You do.
To try to keep the mileages.
I, I got you.
You know, keep the mileage off the newest one.
I, I'm just curious, like how does it go out? And it's probably hard to say, but is it, are we using it a lot comparatively, you think? Or is it?
I think it's about equal. They're, they run, they're averaging 100 and some calls a month.
But either way, even if we've ordered it now, it's going to take two years to get it, right?
Possibility, a year and a half at least.
Okay. So my last question, are you, that, you know, you and I and Eric had a conversation after we went to the active shooter breakout. And I was just wondering if you were thinking about implementing any of that into the budget, whether it's metal detectors, an extra officer out front, some of the other scenarios we talked about.
We haven't, it's not anything that I put in this one, but it has been a conversation before.
I, I know I would personally like to see that as a budget option. I think that's overdue and I, I really think that that's important, but that's just, just my opinion.
It, it's been a few years ago, probably three or four at least, and metal detector was right around 10,000.
I just, you know, you don't need it until you need it.
Right.
So, okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Maroche.
Well, I'm going to ask on, on an item that's not the big expensive item. I'm very curious about this freezer, refrigerator freezer for $5,000. Just, what makes it so special that we couldn't get something cheaper?
That's an industrial rated one.
But what makes it, I mean, why do we need that compared to a, a regular?
That's worst case scenario is what we were looking at.
Sounds like a heck of a freezer, but you know. Oh, is that for evidence?
Hopefully it will last a lot longer.
Evidence. This is not just a.
Not for ice cream.
This is not just a, an icebox they're going down and keep their soda in.
No, this is, this is evidence.
This is evidence.
This is blood samples.
What this is.
Blood samples, sexual assault kits.
Well, I'm ignorant on this, I just thought, my goodness.
It's not for lean cuisine.
Yeah.
Okay.
The evidence that's in it could be in it for years upon end, some of it.
Okay. Well.
It's not something we want to lose.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes. On the ambulance situation, chief, I have a concern with the fact that you're looking at having two ambulances and we need three because this city is not running lesser calls. We're looking at lead times of at least a year to two years of getting an ambulance. I personally feel that within the next five years, we need to be looking at an ambulance located on the other side of town. I do know there were some conversations with the fire department about possibly locating one in one of their facilities as a second one. I feel that we need to have two ambulances, definitely on the holidays running. I took and spent some time with you and the ambulance people, maybe a year ago, six months, something like that. And we looked at the call load and is, you know, should be shocked, no shock to anybody, the call load goes up in June, July and August. It used to only go up in July, now it's June, July and August, a little in September, you know, a little in May, and it's just going to keep going up. And so we need to be looking at that. So I think the board needs to consider that. With that being in mind, we need to look at two ambulances in service. And when you have two in service, you got to have a spare, at least one spare. It's, it, you know, good practices, you have one spare for each, each frontline.
Correct.
So I think that's something we need to be considering. You know, we definitely need to do this and we need to be started looking, especially with the, with the supply chain being as bad as it was and with it taking that long to get an ambulance. So I support, not I support this, but support looking, that, that, looking forward to, to putting that second ambulance in the service.
Yes, sir.
The other question I have for you is, totally support your vehicles. Is the, is the extra vehicle you're looking for, is it simply because you're, you got to have that reserved?
No, we're, our department's growing or has grown, we're at full staff. We did, adding the additional SRO, we did keep a car this year. And right now we've, our detectives are, it'd be, what we will probably do, the plan would be is take one of our higher mileage cars that we have now, put that other new one in the fleet for patrol and move one of the higher mileage ones down to this. And it'd be an additional detective and administrative car.
Well, one of the things I want to say is that by doing what we did a number of years ago, one of the things that we were, we advocated, since we were really replacing the cars that are much better, lower, lower mileage, is we didn't need as many extra cars sitting back there.
Right.
Well, now that we've got away from that and now we're keeping cars up to the 100,000 miles, we need to be thinking about having a more reserved car sitting out there just so that when the police officers need a car, they got a car. So by going back to the system as Jeff was talking about, that I have been in favor of for years, that would have, that would mean that we would have a lesser need for as many cars just sitting out there because the amount of times that they're breaking and they're, and they're down will be less. So I think that's something we need to consider as well. So I, I think we need to bite the bullet. We've, we've pushed it too long and somewhere or another, we need to start getting our fleet back up in line. Thank you.
One last question. Are most of, most of the officers' cars take home cars or are we hotboxing a lot or?
No, we've only got, there's only two of us with take home cars right now, myself and Sergeant Swin that lives in the city. Correction, three with our K-9 car. And that's a dedicated car, so nobody else shares it. Our soup, our sergeants, we try to have an individual car, they keep, have their own. But everybody else shares, they'll be, the two night shift share and the two day shift share.
And that's why.
So we try to give them 12 hours to rest in between shifts.
And that's why we see them outside running sometimes, right?
Well, the reason they're outside running is all the electronic equipment we have in them, cameras, computers.
Oh, I see.
We shut them off, the computers take a bit to reboot, the cameras take a minute to reboot.
Gotcha.
And then they're not ready to go if we need to hop in it and go and start it back up, all that's.
But that's still, that's still wear and tear on a vehicle and you're not even seeing it in the mileage.
Right.
Because they're out there running, okay.
Just the ones with 100,000 mile, over 100,000 miles on it, they probably got another, what would equal at least a quarter of that in idle time.
Sure, okay.
Additional.
Thanks.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and make a comment. I'm going to, the board I think pretty much knows my stance on this. We have some new personnel that probably doesn't, but I've been preaching for the last two years about enterprise leasing. And we've brought it up twice, it's been turned down. But again, it goes back to kind of what Mr. Fisher was saying too, is, is that we would have the opportunity to have new vehicles, they would, they would look appealing, they would have the buying power from enterprise, they would, if we signed up with them to do the vehicle maintenance plan, they would be able to tell us, one year you may spend $30,000 on a car or vehicle, truck, whatever it may be. And then all of a sudden they found a buyer that can buy it for 28 and you can get a brand new one. I still, I think enterprise is the way to go. And as we look at these cars at a tune of, what, how much is it? $455,000. If we were on a leasing program, I just think it would be, it'd be a better way to go. So I'll just say that one more time. I've said it twice and went nowhere, but it may be time to look at it a third time. All right, anything else, chief?
No, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to respond, I, I believe in the enterprise program. I believe that they, as Jeff has explained, you know, they can tell us the right time to sell it. And I would support a fleet program, program of some kind. My only thing that I don't like is the lease portion. But we could, but if I understood the presentation right, we can be involved with them where it's not a lease program, but it's a, they manage our fleet, but we buy them rather than lease them. So I just want to say that, that I do support right there with you, except I'd like to look at the.
Gotcha.
The buying rather than the leasing.
Appreciate it.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to Bill, new business, Bill 2585 in accordance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending chapter 710 sewer and sewage systems, section 710-070 violations. First reading, city attorney, Cole Bradshaw.
Thank you, mayor, members of the board. As you can see from the blue sheet, this is just a cleanup we caught while we were working on some other stuff. And we've caught several of these during codification, so you'll see a few more of those, but this is one that was not caught in codification. So this is consistent with a bunch of other changes. Basically, we don't need this, this language is extra, we already have penalty provisions back in chapter 100. And you don't want to say things twice because you might say them different. So I'll propose removing this one and just relying on chapter 100.
Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, we have a second.
Second.
Alderman Rucker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Bill 25-85 passes. Next, we'll move on to Bill 25-86, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending chapter 240 Aeronautical Service and Activities, section 240.040 Aeronautical Services, section 240.050 Late Payment Penalty, Notification of Delinquency, Discontinuance of Services for Non-Payment as Set Forth, City Attorney Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is an update that goes with the second to last item on the agenda. We rewrote the airport, airplane hang release. It's a collective effort of Ty, April, myself and Carrie Bell to make it copasetic with all of our various requirements. But this ordinance is also kind of out of date. And, sorry, I'm getting to that page in the packet. But these are changes that we would like to make to essentially streamline a lot of these ordinances. Several of the changes are, their deletions are actually things that really belong in our lease, not in the ordinance. And so we, kind of similar to what we did with parks a few weeks ago, this is in the same vein as that. So staff recommends approval.
Alderman Hoffman.
Ty, if I could direct this to you. I know it's a rarity that you are going to have to talk a lot at these meetings, but we don't have a whole lot of hangers out there. I know we all want to have more hangers. Are we having a problem with people being delinquent in their payments? No, they're pretty much like that. Okay. All right, thanks.
That, that language is just cleanup on some real old language and it's meant to jive with the lease you're going to approve, hopefully approve later.
No, it's great to get it on record that hanger people pay up so we can build some more hangers.
They do.
Very good. There's no other questions or comments. I'd entertain a motion to approve first reading.
Someone?
Alderman Maroche. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, Alderman Burrella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Bill 25-86 passes. Next, we have Bill 25-87, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending chapter 135 Finance and Purchasing, section 135.080 Transfer and Sales as Set Forth. First reading, Assistant City Administrator, April White, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. This is removing some antiquated information in our surplus code. Going, reducing the 15 days down to 10 days. No longer advertising in the newspaper, no longer doing sealed bids and adding the employee purchase program. And then Michael did attach his purchase program as well. We found that just the city-owned devices, the laptops, the cell phones, when we salvage those or when we get rid of those, we literally get pennies on the dollar. So as an added employee benefit, we can let the employees buy those at market value and not only let that be an employee benefit, but get a couple extra dollars for the city as well. So win-win.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Hoffman.
And I really just don't have any idea, but I happen to be sitting in a Public Works breakout with, with Jeff and there was something in there about you had to advertise in newspapers.
Those are Public Works contracts.
Only?
This is surplusing.
All right, so this doesn't, this doesn't correlate with that. Okay, I was just wondering.
Yep.
Man, look at you. You've had attention.
He kept nudging me the whole time.
I had to.
Alderman Osteen. I'm just curious on what initiated the reasoning behind reducing it from the 15 to the 10-day?
Honestly, the two online auction companies that we deal with, they recommended that. They actually think it should be less than 10 days, but we wanted to give, you know, our citizens and the people who follow us on social media extra time. But they said 15 days is just too long. People lose interest. So actually that shorter timeframe because so many people are online now and that's how they purchase things. But luckily.
I was just curious about the reasoning behind the change.
That's the reason behind it.
What were we gaining from that?
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Alderman Rucker.
Yes, I'm going to ask April this and show her my sheet and let her explain it. I think it's a scrip error. I don't know what that little thing right there is. Is that a one or a what? It's on one of, shall I be?
Yeah.
The first line on, on item one sale of auction, all the way over, shall something, is that a one?
There's an extra "shall" in there.
There's just an extra, just an extra one.
Extra one?
What, I bet I know what it is. When you download it from the, from code, that's probably a footnote. One is probably a footnote.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry. And like I said, I'm, without being gone to MML, I didn't get a chance to look.
It's not, it's, I bet it's a footnote in the, on the online text.
Right here, on, down on number three, about in the middle. Shouldn't that be BE, made by?
Yep.
Or?
Made be able instead of made viable. Yep.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, didn't bring that to staff up earlier, but gone last couple of days and didn't read, read anything.
Anyone else? All right, Tara's going to get that fixed. Do we have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Bill 2590, in ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending chapter 100 and adding section 100.250 Business Relations as Set Forth, City Attorney Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is the, when we've been talking about the ordinance that allows us to revoke, deny or suspend any city approval. So this is, so we've talked about it a lot in the context of like a business license, but this would also apply to a stormwater permit, an event permit, you name it. If it's something we approve. We've put a lot of time and effort into this. Devin, April, Tara, myself, going, trying to find the right balance of discretion. You know, not one size fits all, but at the same time making it specific enough so that everyone understands it. This is based loosely on a few different city. I took the best ideas I found from a few different cities and mixed them together in a way that I thought made sense. But what we've tried to do here is give ourselves a more spelled out approach to somebody who is, to different scenarios. So whether it's a situation where you have a bar that is consistently, you know, is getting, you know, eight calls, eight calls a night. Or a contractor whose employees routinely are speeding around town or have untarp trucks or something like that. There is an appeal process. There's a lot of kind of safeguards put in. The idea of this is that this is not a gotcha system. This is a progressive discipline system. But we hope that this will give us more tools in between sending letters and citing people in city court. Because right now, if we have a violation, our only option, our options are either nasty letters or citation in city court, or we have to sue them. And all of those are, are either time consumed, either too harsh or not harsh enough. And so this gives us kind of something in between those. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions and I do recommend approval.
Alderman Osteen. Cole, you're adding quite a lengthy ordinance to our regulations here.
I am.
And obviously we have faith in our city attorney and this, don't take this wrong, but who is your checks and balances? When you're adding something of this nature, is there somebody that you refer to to read through this as well and give you direction on whether this is?
I do not have another attorney to check my work. No, I, no. So I, I generated this myself based on looking at several ordinances from cities. And I, and I know which attorneys represent those cities, so I know who drafted that. So there, there are people whose, I can kind of crib their work. But ultimately, the board's my, my check.
Normally with ordinance changes, it's delete this line, add this line, et cetera. In this case though, it is such a lengthy new ordinance that we are trying to adopt here. I was just curious on the process, on what other entities or is there another entity that's reviewing this on our behalf other than you? Not to disparage you at all, but I was just curious.
Nope. Buck stops with me.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Collins.
So I have a couple of questions. When we talked, you had mentioned that there's some leeway in this.
Correct.
That it gives you the tools. I guess anytime there's leeway, the thing that concerns me is, all right, so you decide that you don't like me personally and you're, does this allow you to treat me differently than anybody else in the city? Because of, could it be used that way? I'm not saying you would do that.
So.
We'll say your successor doesn't like me personally. Can they use this to treat people differently?
Well, so it won't probably apply to my office very much because I don't do much, really any permitting of any kind. But let, but let's say we have a rogue appointed official in any number of, I mean, it applies to almost everybody else here. Maybe, maybe Carrie Bell, maybe not. But, but most of the rest, you know, it's, give out some kind of permit or permission or approval at some level. And if we have somebody coming in who is using it abusively, first of all, I would expect you to hear about it from your constituents. We're not, we're not a big town.
I would too.
I would expect that we would hear about it in a, in a public meeting. The appeals go to the city administrator. We've had several issues in the past since I've been here that have gotten quite controversial. And even though, you know, I can think of one last year that was entirely within my discretion, but I kept you, the board, very much informed on developments on that one involved a sign. But, you know, and at, and at that level, if the, if that appointed official is abusing their ability, the board has the power and probably obligation at that point to remove them and appoint somebody who will take it back, basically. I mean, I think that, that's the, you know, is, it's, we, you know, I tried to put in several safeguards, you know, in B, you know, the statement of policy that this is only to be used to obtain compliance where needed. You know, that there is a clear expectation from the board to staff on how this is to be used. This is not to settle scores or to harass people. And that, you know, the punishment needs to fit the crime. So the goal here is to get it right and give staff the tools to match the punishment or the remedy really to the problem we are trying to solve.
And I recall reading that the, the goal is only as far as is necessary to ensure compliance. So that.
If we get, if we get some, you know, and that's the same thing we do with, you know, anytime we have a compliance case, you know, whether it comes from Ron's office or Josh, that comes to city court, the goal is compliance. The goal is to get them right. And once they're right, it's a piddly little fine and get out of here.
Okay.
I mean, and that's how we've always treated them. That's how Todd, the assistant prosecutor, still treats them. That is, if we have to get to municipal court, we've gone a long ways with them first and that was the, that was the last straw. But even then, once we get them in court, they usually get continuance after continuance after continuance to get right and the judge is on them to get right with us. Rarely do we ever have to like ramp up the heat on them. I can think of two that we did. And they were inspirations for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Osteen. To expand on what Alderman Collins just stated, I think what we're leading to, or what you're thinking is, maybe there needs to be more definitive wording here regarding enforcement without prejudice. So therefore, we're not opening ourselves up to business owners or citizens that are stating, well, they're right in my case because, oh, it's a bad seed. We've already had problems with this business. So we're basically going to target that business for compliance or issues more likely than others. So I think what you're saying is maybe a little more verbiage that states that.
I think we all took an oath to do that when, when we took our jobs. And, you know, I'm thinking of two in particular. Ron, I know you know who one of them is. We almost named this ordinance after this person. But, you know, you have these people and that person was absolutely a victim. If you heard them tell it, they were a victim. We were, we were going after them. They're not a victim in any way, shape or form. It was entirely self-inflicted. It was, I mean, it was a, they took the gun and aimed it at their own foot and pulled the trigger.
Sure.
But, I mean, I think the answer is, at certain point, you got to trust the, the folks you've hired to do the job fairly. And if you have a fairness concern, you've got the wrong person on the job.
Alderman Collins.
So using the person that you were just talking about, I play devil's advocate a lot. I apologize. What is his process of pleading?
Challenging?
To, yeah, of pleading his case. Because if it's municipal court, then you go in front of the judge and he can plead his side of the story. In this ordinance, where is his?
Process?
Yes. Thank you.
So first appeals to the city administrator.
Okay.
Who checks our work. And if our work is wrong, he can take us to circuit court and a judge can review her decision.
Okay.
So there, so this is a, there's a particular type of administrative case that is called administrative law, but this would be a non-contested case. The challenge to that is circuit court and we have.
And parlaying any one of us.
And then, and then in court, we have to justify the decision and show that it was reasoned, that it was not born out of animosity. We weren't trying to get somebody that we were, we had a valid, a valid basis. At the same time, it does also protect the city because we do get the benefit of the doubt. The judge doesn't have to agree with us perfectly. They just have to say, look, that was reasoned, that made sense. They don't have to say, look, you got it perfect. It's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to second guess you as long as, you know, reasonable lines can differ. That's basically the standard. And in addition to that legal remedy, again, if that person wants to come into a board meeting and say, these big old manies at city hall are picking on me, they can do that. That's their First Amendment right and the board has the right to, to second guess us if, if they want to.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, seeing no more questions. Do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Burrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Bill 25-90 passes first reading. Next, we have a presentation, a presentation regarding updates to the Public Works organizational structure. Turn it over to Public Works Director Jeff Fisher.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're going to try and address multiple points here. So I'll do my best to articulate each of those points and the what, why and how.
Could you just raise your volume a little bit?
I'll do that. I'll do my best. All right. So I'm going to do my best to speak loudly and articulate our purpose here. I will say, well, I've been here almost, almost four months now and it's been a good experience. And it's been a pleasure working with the Public Works team. It really has. We're asking them, they've been asked to do a lot. We're asking them to be responsible for more, but in a different way as well. And for example, we have just finished up our CIP proposal. And I told the team they're in a unique position because normally their colleagues, when they walk into, into a budget season, there's already a five-year CIP. And all they have to do is update it. Well, that is not the case here. We just spent probably eight weeks using data and studies and knowledge and other information sources to develop a five-year CIP. They came through really well. And we'll find out over the next few weeks from the city administrator and, and you, what that end product, what that outcome is going to be. But I've been, it's been really good working with them. We've got new faces like the construction inspector that I believe you've met in the audience before and the GIS specialist. And the team's really coming together and coalescing around. We even had a discussion here not too long ago about our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And from that, we'll identify some goals. So I say all that just to say things are going well. It ain't been easy. They'll tell you that. They're doing things that, that they haven't done before. And so I'm, I'm pleased with that so far. The Public Works Department, and you know, I will say that like in your strategic planning discussion, you made staff development a priority. You also made it a priority in Public Works. Last year, in 2024, you commissioned a study by Raf Telles to evaluate Public Works from top to bottom. Its operations, how it delivers services, its organization. Its operations, how it delivers services, its organization, and they made some recommendations. And one of those recommendations was to hire an experienced Public Works Director to assess it further and then make recommendations to you. That's where we're at. I'm kind of on page two, if you're following along in the presentation. But before I got here, from the Raph Telles study, the city administrator and the assistant city administrator and others were evaluating the findings of the Raph Telles study and had proposed reclassifying the foreman. And if you remember in May, you passed the first reading, which the city administrator mentioned earlier. And then I was, I was appointed the same night, so it was basically handed off to me to do further evaluation and I've done that. After about 90 days, I had a real good feel for how we needed to handle this and so that's what I'm recommending tonight. We have an organizational chart, we have job descriptions and I believe a good justification for reclassification and going with the crew leads as was recommended back in May. I'm on the third page, if, if anybody's following the presentation. On the third page, third page, I just want to point out a couple of things. We're already sort of in a predicament because based on the work that was being asked of them when I got here, they are qualified to be exempt employees. They should be exempt employees by federal law. They are directing personnel, evaluating personnel, managing vital programs, developing recommendations for budget, purchasing, et cetera. They are already supposed to be exempt employees, salary employees. And the market says the same. So when you look at the MML study that city administrator and I referenced in our work, those positions are salary and based on the work they were performing and are now performing especially, they should be superintendents and I'll come back to that. By the way, I know there's a compensation study in the budget and I think we're still working through that and finding, figuring out how to do that this year or next. A compensation study will absolutely be good for the organization. They don't normally evaluate a structure of a business unit or an organization within the government. That's what this is, so that would be a separate exercise. And so, but we've done that, we've done that same legwork in this, in this benchmarking to justify what to pay these employees if you were to approve it. So I'm going to the next page, there's the Raph Telles study recommendation nine, you did hire an experienced Public Works Director. And we, again, we have been through that, the evaluation that it suggested. We are, I'll just reiterate, we are doing work differently and beyond what they were doing before and they were already considered exempt at that time. The market values them differently than they've been valued before and I'll say they're embracing it. Like I said earlier, it hasn't been easy. It's been a tough haul the last four months, but they've really embraced it and they're stepping up and they're doing the work that a superintendent ought to do or even a manager. Next page, please. One of the things that noteworthy, something I've used in the past and my colleagues use, a rule of thumb for what your personnel costs ought to be as a part of your annual O and M cost is 25 to 35%. Right now, as you can see, streets is 17%, water is 23% and sewer is 22%. So we're, we're under that rule of thumb. So that put us, put me in an even better position to make a recommendation. So recommendations would be similar to what you heard in May. Make, reclassify the foreman to superintendent, pay level alone. Create the crew leads. I do believe that will be effective. And then that would be one for water, one for transportation and two for sewer. And then that would result in 11% increase in the transportation salary budget and 24%, let's see, 30% in water. There would be no net effect in sewer because of the vacancies they've been carrying this year. And again, that's, those percentages are just for the salaries, the compensation portion of the O and M budget. And if that were to be supported, we would still be within that 25 to 35%. So I feel good about that. It would be no net impact to the budget this year, but of course, that would be seen in next year's budget and subsequent years. So I'll just finish, or read a book several years ago. I mentioned this to a couple in this room not too long ago called Good to Great and it has some real core principles in it for organizations that, you know, desire to do all the great things we all want to do. And one of those is get the right people on the bus, get the wrong people off and then get the right people in the right seats doing the right things. And that's really what we're talking about tonight. Put these folks, restructure, put these folks in the right seats, valued at the right level, doing the right things. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, Matt.
All right. I think this is into the presentation. Do we, do we want to answer questions now or do we want to read the second reading and then answer questions? I'm looking for some...
I have some questions. Let's do questions.
All right. Alderman Rucker.
You're FL, or you're, you're exempt, making the employees, you know, exempt. 100% support, okay? Been down that road, unfortunately, in my career, I had knock on the door from FLSA, which wasn't fun. Federal Labor Standards Act, for those of you who haven't heard that, so, so I just wanted to dot the I and cross the T and dot the I and cross the T. So I just want to just make sure we're going down the road, we're, we went through that, that test because I know these, these folks won't be doing the hiring and have a, have a, they will not have a, from my understanding of everything, and that's where I had a problem. My, my people didn't have anything to do with the hiring of it and, and, and the firing of it. Anyway, those two test things, so I just, I support it. I just wanted to just make sure that you guys have went down that road and, and you feel comfortable and you've dealt with the attorney and you've dealt with the FLSA laws and that's just a concern I have.
If you'd like, we can run it up the flagpole with Matt Gist, our outside employment attorney, and just get his, and get his blessing for it and if he's got any concerns, he can tell us pretty quick.
I would just, it just, I just, again, I support it. I support it 100%. I'm, I'm sure they're not gonna say it can't be done, but they might have to say is we might have to do a little bit of tweaking of the job description that say, they don't have to have the final approval, a final okay to hire, a final okay to fire, but as long as they have some, some input, that was the problem that seemed to be an issue.
If you want to dot the I, that, that would qualify as dotting the I.
I, I just, I, again, just had that concern though. The other thing is, is in reference to your recommendations, no, excuse me, sorry, in reference to your noteworthy, you know, right now, we've got 17% for water, 23% for, excuse me, 17% for streets, 23% for water and 22% for sewer. I am deeply opposed to sewer being 22%. Sewer, our sewer people, if you're looking at the fact of, of 25 to 35%, our sewer people are not on that 25%. They need to be on the upper. We forget, our sewer people are electricians as well. And when you look at these comparisons that you're gonna be comparing and, and when you talk about your comparison, you're talking about other sewer departments, those people, and I'm not trying to downplay those people, they don't have to have a need for the electrical responsibilities that our sewer people do. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration and that's where there needs to be, whatever that normal sewer is, ours need to be more because of that electrical technology and, and capabilities that they need to have. That's something I've always felt. I know making organizational changes are, are challenging. Again, through my career, I've, I've been there and I've done it, made the mistakes, done them wrong. And, and so as you know, you, you try to do the best and I, and I, and, and just once you make it, my suggestion is, as far as I'm concerned, if you see something just isn't right, don't be afraid to come back to me as a board member and ask to tweak, tweak it again.
Okay.
I know you're, you're trying to do your best with it, but, but when you make those changes and, and, and I think that there, there might be some mistakes here, I hope there's not, but I support anything that we can look at, that we try to make things operate smoother.
Thank you. All right. Alderman Collins.
Okay, so I have a lot. You, you mentioned the MML wage study, that's kind of where you guys got the numbers for this, correct?
Right.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that's like all of the municipalities submit, here's what we pay positions?
That's correct.
Okay. But we have budgeted to do another compensation study in January. So I guess my first question is, should we not wait to make changes to this until we've seen that other study? Or should we save the money on the study and use the MML wages across the board?
So the compensation study was budgeted for this year, but it came in over budget. So if you approve it to be in the 26 budget, we can proceed. If you don't, then we, we will, we will be relying on the MML wage study for this year's budget presentations.
Okay.
But we are gonna request that job compensation study in 26 if you guys would please to approve it.
Understood.
Can I, the compensation study that we're trying to get approved is citywide, not just Public Works specific.
So is MML, if I'm...
Correct.
MML is all positions.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I guess the question is, for you, is why would we not make changes to compensation after we've had the complete compensation study instead of doing it now? Quite frankly, so we, we create these positions, we promote everybody that is being promoted, hire the new people and set the salaries and then we get the compensation study and we went too far. It's not like we can say, hey, you're gonna have to take a pay cut, like it doesn't work that way. So should we not wait?
Well, the city admin, basically, we, we researched the MML study. I suggested a certain salary. So the administrator pushed back on that and said, hey, this is what I'm seeing in the data. Rightly so. She went through it and used towns of similar population, fourth-class cities, various factors, and she filtered through all the data and said, this is what I'm seeing. And I couldn't argue that. So that's the same thing a compensation study firm would do. And so if we know now that we've got a structural issue, a FLSA issue, and the three that are doing that are being asked to do more than a foreman position, then I'm suggesting we just remedy that now. And I feel good that the data, based on city administrator and I's work, the compensation study firm would find the same.
Okay. So the, I'm sorry, I think when you did this originally, I, it was like my second meeting. Maybe the third. Okay, so three people are being reclassified to superintendent, correct?
Right.
And then there are four positions of crew leader that are being created, but foreman position is being eliminated.
Right.
Am I right so far?
Right.
Okay. So then for the crew leaders, those are new positions, there's not, it's, there's not somebody that is...
Yeah, they don't exist right now.
Okay. And you're gonna open that up for outside applications or preferably internal applications?
Right.
So in theory, we could add, if we don't promote people that are currently here, in theory, we could be adding four more people, but you hope not.
That's correct.
Okay. Making sure I'm...
Yep.
Got it, okay. I think this is last, so we were talking about on the current streets is 17%, water is 23%, sewer is 22. If we increase it by the 30%, 24% and 11%, doesn't it then go over that 20 to 25? Maybe only water does.
I was pretty certain we stayed within that range.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and you know, the, so the increases that are described in there aren't just the one person, the foreman going to superintendent, that is, including the crew leads too, so that's a total.
And, and this is also assuming that you can get these positions filled, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm assuming you have the same problem that all of us do with hiring right now, so, okay.
Taking in sewer.
All right. So I think lastly, you said there's no impact, there's no budget, impact on the budget for this year, but we have on the agenda to, for a budget amendment to cover the costs. So if there's not an impact on the budget, why do we have a budget amendment?
Well, there's two things and one's actually gonna be a correction, so hopefully the city administrator will help me through this. The first is in water, one of the two, we're just transferring funds within the fund, within the O and M budget to cover that increase. The other one, at the time, we, we didn't have a good solution to that, so we were actually proposing to increase the budget. But since then, working through the, the budget and the CIP, we found a few areas that we can move money within the current budget and no net increase to the total O and M budget. So in both cases, there are gonna be funds left over and a few line items based on projections that we can use to cover the salary increase for the foreman and the crew leads. So we'd actually have to make a correction to that one.
Budget adjustment, but not budget increases.
We're not increasing the budget, we're just adjusting within the budget, moving money.
So you're just moving things from other, other buckets into the salaries bucket?
Yeah. Almost invariably, in my experience, there are gonna be line items with monies left over. You always want to come in at or under the budget, of course, and almost always, there's a few line items that are gonna come under, so we would use that to cover that.
All right, I get that, but as Alderman Rucker pointed out, I think at last meeting, that just because you got leftover money at the end of the year doesn't mean you could get to move it to something else.
I don't disagree. I'm in support of that generally.
Okay, thank you. I think you answered all my questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman Osteen.
All right, so at the end of the day, looking at the organizational chart, you're basically creating two new positions for 2026, correct? Because if I look at what is on the original versus the organizational chart that being proposed, there are two new positions. One is being the water superintendent per se and one is a transportation crew lead. So if we add numbers on total staffing currently versus what we're proposing, that's two new positions, which I'm fine with. Obviously, I believe that we're understaffed in those, all those departments to begin with. Going back to some of the issues that were brought up about the MML numbers for compensation is, we need to remember that those are basically medians across the board, that all cities are equal. We basically get categorized with the city of Camenton, but what we're wanting to do internally with the compensation study is more in-depth to our specific community, i.e. Camenton is our neighboring sister community, we get compared to them a lot, with their 98 lift stations versus our 1,400. So it's not apples to apples because when you look at the median numbers MML is using, those are how they're saying, oh, OCH Beach has almost the same population as Camenton, so here's where you should be at this level of pay, this pay grade, et cetera. But once again, what we're wanting to do with the city moving forward is something way more in-depth because what we're dealing with obviously is unique to what we get categorized with as neighboring cities. So I just wanted to bring that up as an example and once again, Camenton, with their 98 lift stations and our 1,400.
Right.
So anyway, just a little FYI on that. So where I get a little confused on this is, we recently adjusted the organizational chart and moved what I believe were crew leaders to foremen and now we're moving foremen to superintendents. No, yes, because we had three individuals that are now considered the foremans that stood before us about six months ago, actually, yeah, before you came on board and they were getting moved up to a different position.
It was from foreman to supervisor or something like that.
Foreman to supervisor.
And that motion was only a first.
That's what tonight is.
This is that motion.
So then...
And that was the night I was appointed and so you just stalled that until...
So from foreman to superintendent, okay. And just to dial it down, and I probably could do my homework on this, is once again, I would like to see verbatim the differences in the job descriptions on the tiling changes or if there is any.
What, job description?
Yeah.
There are job descriptions.
Well, what I'm saying, what are the differences between foreman to superintendent? Uh, you don't have to answer that question right now, but just a little, expand on it a little bit more, I would like to know how we've tweaked the job description on, on those two different positions, because we are basically increasing pay, correct?
Yes.
So just dial down to the nth degree of, here's the differences that justify the pay increase, just these differences between these two positions.
Yeah, we can certainly get to the job descriptions. Generally, it's, it's, it's to reflect, um, their administrative duties increasing versus their field duties. So instead, you know, they were probably out in the field 60 or 70% of the time, and a lot of times, they just had to be, we want to get away from that. But now they're being asked to do a lot more administrative duties, so they've shifted to 60, 70% in the office versus in the field.
Yeah, and I remember having those discussions before, but like I said-
So you'll see that, you would see that in the job description.
Easier to digest when what, what, just bottom-line differences in the job description, which justify the pay increase.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all. Anyway, I, I fully support what you're trying to do here, as you all know.
Yeah.
Uh, sometimes it's just trying to get all the details out there in the open, so we can wrap our head around it, as well as the public, especially if we're talking increases in title, increases in pay, increases in staffing.
Yeah, we can send those out by email.
All right.
You did that recently, project manager.
I wanna say I did send these out a while back.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
But it was, okay.
The way they were asked before, the city administrator sent them out to us.
But where we, okay, this is where I get confused again. Where we, where we decided we're gonna call them, instead of foreman, they're gonna be supervisors, but now instead of supervisors, they're gonna be superintendents?
It's always been budgeted as superintendent.
I just remember them going from foreman to something else, I thought it was superintendent.
I might interrupt here real quick. Bill 2546, we'll outline it in red for you.
Okay.
That, that'll be next.
Okay. Like I said, just trying to wrap my head around all the changes in the tiling. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Hoffman, sorry.
For the most part, I support everything that's going on, like everybody else, so I'm, I am just a little confused on this. So the 2026 budget, you are recommending adding four positions or two?
You will see in 2026, the outcome of this, which would be, you'd have four crew leaders, where you don't have any now, and three superintendents, um, instead of the foreman, and the increase in the budget as a result of that, that, of 11% and 20%.
But how many actual-
Well, in the organization-
There's none, according to your-
Kevin, can I just ask Jeff, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's because of the reclassification and the tiling changes, uh, it, it gets a little confusing, but you can see in the original FTE count in the org chart, and then the proposed revision, it's the same.
Okay, so-
It's a budget increase, but not necessarily an FTE increase.
But we are adding two individuals next year.
Well, we haven't got there yet.
But, but that, but that's what you're looking to do, correct?
We'll pro- we, we're making a proposal in the budget that you'll see later, adding FTEs.
Okay.
But in this, we're not actually adding FTEs.
Right.
Unless we end up hiring people from the outside, there is a risk that that could happen.
Okay. I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, because, you know, we've got an ambulance coming, that's $400,000. We've got more hangers coming, you know, we have to find ways to pay for it, or we have to start cutting stuff.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, and we hired a lot of people last year, uh, citywide. So, you know, we can't have all brand-new toys and brand-new people all the time, so I'm trying to kind of just get it in my head of where I wanna go priority-wise.
And you'll see a proposal to add FTEs if the city administrator moves it forward as we proposed. Of course, you could always not do that, especially if we end up adding FTEs through this crew leader thing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Brilla.
This is essentially, though, just getting these guys paid for duties they're already doing that are not in their job descriptions, though.
That's right.
Okay.
Alderman Rucker.
Are you fully staffed in transportation, water, and sewer?
Uh, transportation, we are, water, we're losing one, and we just lost one in sewer, so we're down one in water and two in sewer.
So you're down one in water and down two in sewer?
Right.
Okay. So if you don't fill those positions, which is, I suggest you don't, until you get the hire, until you get the promotion done, you shouldn't be adding staff. And besides that, you're only approved for 28 people total, so you should not be adding. If you're gonna bring somebody in from the outside to fill one of them positions, you only have 28 positions.
That is a strategy to consider.
So what you should be doing is, I mean, your organizational chart says you're only gonna have 28 people, you're just changing it around. So there shouldn't be additional people in 25's budget.
Okay. It's a strategy to consider for sure.
But we've not approved additional bodies, we've approved different-
If I get a great candidate, though, I'm probably gonna, probably gonna hire him.
If they're in water or sewer, you're okay, because you have one open available water, two open in sewer.
Right.
If it's transportation, you gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
All right. Any more questions on the presentation portion of this? Alderman Collins?
I just have one quick question. What, what is the dollar amount that this is going to change for next year's budget? So when we go into budget, making these changes, what's, what's the dollar amount that we're talking about?
Hmm, do you, do you have the-
We're still evaluating all of the, the personnel costs right now.
Just back to that, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll have all that in a few weeks.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, thank you, sorry, it just-
That's okay.
All right, now, moving on to the bill portion of it. If you'll remember, we take the unfinished business, the Bill 25-46, and intentionally moved it after the presentation. So this is the second reading of Bill 25-46, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance 2493, adopting the 2025 annual operating budget by removing and adding job titles within the fiscal year 2025 employee, employee pay plan for public works. This is the second reading, and you'll see, under the explanation in red, the job titles and what they wish to do. So I'll turn this back over to Jeff Fisher, if you have anything else.
I don't.
All right. Now, any other comments and questions on the second reading of this bill? Alderman Rucker.
Um, this says floor amendment, second reading. What, when did we make a floor amendment?
We had to do a floor amendment, because in the budget, it already says sewer superintendent. So let me pull up the, let me pull it up here. In the original, um, let me find that thing here, hold on, give me one second.
Hold that up again? Oh, have I pulled it up?
If you look in the budget, it says, um, let me find my 2446, on top of my business. There, there's already a position in the budget for sewer superintendent, and it was combined in the 20, or in the 2446, they, it was, it was broken out as we were adding another position, but we already had that position, so I needed to remove that and just put in, um, water and transportation.
Okay, so we didn't do that when we did the first reading?
Correct.
So we need to do that now?
Correct.
Okay, that's why, cause I didn't think, I went back to the first reading, and I didn't see it in those minutes.
Right, you need to go back and correct it. You need to do a floor amendment to change, to amend it from sewer superintendent, since it's already in the budget, and we're only changing water and transportation.
So the amendment needs to, to, to break out the transportation and water superintendent to two different ca- two different positions?
Correct.
That's, that's the floor amendment?
Correct.
Okay.
But I believe you can do the second reading as amended, correct?
Yes, you can do it as amended, without doing it separately.
Right, I think you can do, do one reading as amended from the floor for the second reading. Am I correct?
Did we, we did not, we did not, we have not voted on the amendment yet?
No.
No, that we need to do a floor amendment?
Floor amendment.
We need to vote on a floor amendment and then vote on the second reading.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
And Tara, can you read what the floor amendment is, please?
The floor amendment is changing, it's, so in your original 24, 2546, we had three positions at a new pay level 11, which was transportation, water, and sewer. Sewer was already in a level 10 as a sewer trans- sewer superintendent. So your floor amendment is gonna be to just add to pay level 11, transportation superintendent and water superintendent.
The amendment is to go from that top block where it says pay lev- pay level?
Right here.
Yeah. Is to present it as a, as it is in your packet.
Correct. So transportation, waters were one position, and were basically the floor amendments is designated as two.
No, because-
Transportation and separate-
No, no, you're, 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 you're getting rid, you're, you're sep- you're separating water and sewer, water and transportation to two different positions, okay? In the budget, sewer superintendent is already in there.
Okay.
We already did that one. That was in there a long time ago, at whatever last amendment we had. But in 2446, it listed all three.
Okay.
So now we're just adding these two, cause sewer's already there, I don't need to do another budget amendment for sewer, because it's already in the budget. These are the only two that we're adding. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Clear as mud?
The, 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 the floor amendment is just to clean up the verbiage, correct?
Clean up, clean up the titles, yes.
So then, I'd like to make a motion to accept the floor amendment.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, well, very good. Now, we're gonna move on to the second reading, then. Bill 25-46, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance 245, 493, adopting the 2025 annual operating budget by removing and adding job titles with fiscal year 2025, employee, boy, I cannot say that, employee pay plan for public works. Do I have a second reading as amended? Do I have a motion to approve second reading as amended?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman, uh, Maro, sorry. Uh, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Maro?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
So I'm actually gonna vote no for this, I, I, with a quick explanation, I appreciate exactly what you're trying to do, and I support it, I just think it should be done as part of the larger budget discussions that we're having in a few weeks, so.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
That was four, correct?
Yes, you're good.
Okay.
You had five.
Oh, I'm sorry, what, Alderman Barella said yes?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Very good. All right, uh, Bill 25-46 passes. Next, we have a resolution.
Did you get wet?
Woo!
Wish I had it right.
Check, check the weather there.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, no.
We asked a bunch of questions, Ross.
Sorry, folks, I'm trying to find where I was. All right. Next, we have resolution, 2025-28, resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity for the amendment and transfer of funds for fiscal year 2025 to cover water and transportation expenditures. Again, Public Works Director Jeff Fisher. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Barella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have Bill 25-49, excuse me, 25-89, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 23.90, adopting the 2025 annual budget, amending and transfer of funds for necess- necess- necessary expenditures in water and transportation. First reading, Jeff Fisher. Yep, you again.
Busy tonight.
It's the same thing we just had.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Anything else?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Alderman Rucker.
I need clarification on the ordinance. If you look at the amendment item and the dollars amount, there's, um, 2,0834, is that supposed to be 20,834? Is the next one supposed to be 13,000? Is the next one supposed to be 11,000? There's comments, and stuff's in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just when, the first one doesn't have a, a digit on that.
Yes, all those need to be fixed, and then the last item is actually supposed to be an increase, that's the salary line item. So it should be greater than 396, cause that's where all those other transfers are going.
I don't know if you can consider all those Scribner errors in, with all those numbers? I don't oppose it, I just wanted, we need to get it cleaned.
Well, sorry. Alderman Osteen.
This isn't the resolution, this is the first reading, so can't basically get cleaned up before the second reading?
Yes.
As far as the adjustments?
Yes, I'll get it cleaned up.
As long as we're assuming those are Scribner errors, yes.
They are.
Well, the bottom line, I, I can go along with most of them, but the bottom one is 256,000, 125 is a wrong number even.
Very, yes, very wrong. It should be 421,016.
That's the big difference.
Are you suggesting to table it, so we can-
Until it's properly cleaned up.
That's a pretty big, that, that's a pretty big number.
All right, is that a motion, Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Alderman Rucker, a second from Alderman Hoffman to table this. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Bill 25-89 has been tabled. Next, we have a motion, motion to approve the updated version of the hanger lease agreement. City Attorney Cole Bradbury.
Thank you, mayors members of the board. Uh, this is part of the earlier ordinance we did, which authorizes Ty to sign these, this is kind of cleanup, it was a little, Ty's been signing them, um, you know, for a long, long time, uh, but the ordinance cleanup explicitly spells out that you can, uh, but in order to comply with the state statute, Alderman Hoffman, you'll remember that municipal statute of frauds from our session, uh, we needed the board to approve the terms, um, so that, uh, Ty is able to, um, set those, um, approve those leases. Uh, and so this is, these are the, this is the form lease that we're gonna update to, um, it says what our old leases said, but, um, that one was probably from 2004 or so, and so we've just modernized it, and it tracks our other forms now. Staff recommends approval.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Osteen.
Um, on the hanger lease agreement that was provided, obviously, there's items highlighted in yellow? Yes. And you revised the previous lease agreements, correct? Yes. But there was no revision to the lease agreement we provided.
The, the reason that phrase is highlighted is, um, that's how I do it for staff, when, The reason that phrase is highlighted is, that's how I do it for staff, when, you know, like, I'm not the one preparing each one. You'll notice that it says Grand Glaze Airport, Lucy Fine Airport, it lets them just, it highlights, draws their attention to it, delete the one that it doesn't apply to, and then, that way, you know, when Ty fills it out, it'll say Grand Glaze Airport located at
Okay.
957 Airport Road, and then he unhighlights it, and off we go, but it's just highlighted to make sure that it's, gets caught every single time, and we don't end up with one that says both. But I could put a blank in, but why, it's easier to delete than to type it all out every time.
And not that I want to know the minutia of every change of every document that we have before us, but it would've been nice to see what the differences on the previous lease agreement was to what the revised had changed.
Be happy to send you an email with the old one. This one has all the same meat, it actually just has more of the extra clauses that we've been adding on to our contracts lately, so.
Okay, thank you.
I use the meat from that one in my form.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else seeing none? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Maro, saw those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our motion is approved. Last item of business, a motion to modify January 1, 2026, and January 15, 2026, regular board meetings. Alderman Rucker, please.
Yes, I was going through, doing some personal planning, to be very honest, and realized that the board meeting was gonna be on the 1st of January, which wouldn't work, and then, obviously, we might, sometime we move them a day or so ahead, but that's all the holiday time, and after I looked at it, and looked at the fact that, you know, there'd be a shift of meetings around, seeing that the easiest way to keep it flowing was if we move it to the January 8th and 22nd, we would actually go from our meeting in December, we would actually go three weeks, then we'd have a meeting, we'd go two weeks to have a meeting, and then, from our January 22nd meeting to February, would be two weeks. So it's gonna be two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. There's always, when there's, every once in a while, there's three weeks in between, and I'm just taking the three weeks and putting it around the holiday time, and so it flows evenly, and the reason I brought it up this far ahead is because I know staff as well as others, plan trips and holidays and et cetera, et cetera, and putting things out to bid and et cetera, so I figured now's as good a time as any, since I found it, and like to make a motion that we make the adjustment.
All right, Cole. Cole, have a
I just wanna point out, we had a chamber board meeting this morning, and a legislative committee meeting right after that. I believe the chamber legislative reception is going to be the night of the 8th, and we normally move that, we've, in the past, I think we've moved our board meeting so that the board can attend the chamber legislative reception, the one that's usually at Margaritaville. So I would just, we can, we can, we can do that, but then we might end up moving the 8th if that's, but that's what they're shooting for, and they're still planning it, but Tara and I were talking about, I mean, I think just doing the 7th instead of the 8th seems like the logical way to do it, and it won't, the chamber, the chamber legislative reception is always on a Thursday, because the reps all come on Thursday, they don't have session Friday.
I just wanted to get away from the holidays and stuff.
I just wanted to point that out, so we didn't have to go over and do it again, so.
I think moving it to Wednesday prior is smart.
Make it the 7th and the 12th, or, excuse me, the 7th and the 22nd? I didn't know about.
I know you didn't, it happened this morning, so.
Okay, well, do anybody second my motion?
I'll second that.
No, 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 no. I gotta change it.
Give me a second, I can't do that, sorry, my bad.
I'd like to make the motion to be the 7th and the 22nd, not the 8th.
I would like to second that.
All right, so the motion is to the 7th of January and 22nd of January, and the second is from Alderman Hoffman. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. That was, that was good, Alderman Hoffman. All right, on to staff communications. City Administrator Devon Lake, please.
The only thing I have for tonight is Holly has very talentedly prepared a budget or a project graph for you guys to see where we are in the progress, on the progress of all the projects that were budgeted for this year under transportation, water, and sewer. Hopefully, that provides you guys with some extra information outside of my city administrator's report to let you know how far we are into those projects, and we plan on updating that periodically so that you guys can keep up to date on that. That's all I have this evening.
Very good. Assistant City Administrator April White.
I have nothing, Mayor.
All right, Cole, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Tara?
Have nothing.
Chief?
Just that Bike Fest was fairly uneventful this year, just so everybody knows, they are adding a day to it next year, it will start on Tuesday and go through Sunday, so we'll be planning accordingly. It was, it wasn't, we didn't have as many incidents in town, but there was an awful lot of motorcycle wrecks around us, so.
Mr. Ron White, do you have anything tonight?
I do have a couple of things. One, just to reiterate, going back to the sewer study, that we had the opportunity to go over to municipal equipment, to pick something up from them while I was, oh, aye. So I do have a couple of things, thank you. We had the opportunity, Devon, April, and I, to stop buying municipal equipment after MML, which, thank you all very much for allowing me to attend that, and they were telling us how they use us as the example whenever they have folks say, oh, you know, we've got 200 lift stations, oh, we've got 500 lift stations, and they said, well, Osage Beach has, the number they throw out there is 1,700. Said the only other municipality that they know is close is in southern Illinois, also on a lake at 1,200, so, yeah, we've, there's nobody in Missouri even close to us. Just wanted to point that out and brag on our sewer department. Also, as many of you know, last Friday, at approximately 12:30 PM, we had an incident that resulted in the loss of a few hundred gallons of diluted glycol. Glycol is the chemical that's used in our HVAC loop, that, it's a corrosion inhibitor, temperature regulator, and an antifreeze. Unfortunately, one of our above-ceiling units just outside that door had a pressurized supply line come loose, something as simple as a hose clamp that had stretched out over the many years that that unit was in service. I wanted to point out that within moments of this happening, city hall staff, not in any particular order, I can tell you the young lady sitting back there was probably the first one that went into action, but members from the building department, PIO, city treasurer's staff, city clerk's staff, court clerk, finance department, IT, public works, even our detective sergeant came over, and if I've missed anyone, I apologize. I do bring this to your attention, one, to explain what looks like our new carpeting over there, that is not permanent, but without the quick unified actions of the team members in the area, this disaster would've been much worse. That loop holds approximately 2,000 gallons of solution, and our best estimate right now, at first, I thought 1,000, then we really looked at it, and I spoke with our HVAC maintenance contractor, who was, who was on scene shortly after it all went down, and he said he thinks it's probably a few hundred, 300 or 400 gallons. When I entered the building, we just got back from lunch, hadn't ate yet, I might add, just pulled into the parking lot, and my phone started blowing up, thank you Tara, and Building Inspector Johns, but it looked like an anthill over there. People were moving in every direction, I mean, carrying supplies, trying to contain and maintain the spill, trying to keep it out of the mayor's office, which I told him, don't worry about that. But most of the individuals who responded to this emergency had no obligation to do so. A lot of people, when you see green stuff raining from the ceiling tile, they're gonna back up and say, this is Ron's baby, let him deal with it. None of them did that, they all went into action, and again, the ladies were running around with big trashcans, and they're trying to collect as much as they can, we all got rained on. My first response was, get ahold of the company, make sure this isn't toxic. They immediately said, no, just don't drink it. Unfortunately, IT was looking up like a chicken in the rain, but we pulled him aside, just kidding Michael, if you're listening. The choices that those people made saved the city a lot of money. If we had lost more, again, our maintenance guy went downstairs immediately, or not immediately, once we figured out the source, you know, we had to pull tiles to see it, he shut off the pumps to stop the pressurized flow of the water, and everybody, when I say everybody, there are pictures available, men, women, very few children, but they were sweeping shop, vacuum, public work showed up, our deputy city clerk came over, who can I call, what can I do? So we said, the first one that came to mind, US Disaster Recovery, they were here within 20 minutes and basically took control of the scene. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to point that out, and I want to thank everybody who responded to the incident. I can't say how grateful and how amazed I am at the teamwork that I witnessed last Friday, and that's all I've got.
Wow. Airport, Ty Dinsdale?
Yeah, can't follow that. I just wanted to thank Cole and April and Carrie Bell for working on my stuff these last several months, trying to clean some stuff up and get this hanger lease and work over the ordinances. Thank you very much. Jeff Fisher, I don't know if you have room on your bus, but I'd like a seat on your bus, I'm not sure which bus it would be, but, thank you.
Eric Gregory, Parks?
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, the Osage Beach rummage sale is day after tomorrow, Saturday, September 20th. It'll be 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM at City Park for the City Park Rummage Sale. I think we have 10 vendors there, and we'll have the concession stand open, and we have 20 rummage sales scheduled for around town. You can go to the Parks and Rec webpage under Programs and Events for a map that you can print out of all the addresses, it's also interactive, so thank you Hannah, our GIS person, for putting that together for us. There is still time to reserve a space at City Park if you want to, so if you're interested, give the Parks Department a call. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, Marketing Director, we have Eric Hundelt.
Next board meeting is when I'll be able to add a lot more value, I promise.
Very good.
Nothing right now.
All right. Jeff Fisher, you got anything else to say tonight? All right, Carrie Bell?
Nothing for me this evening.
Carrie Betterson?
Well, in the spirit of changing the dates for meetings, the November Planning Commission meeting falls on Veterans Day, so I will be getting ahold of the chairman tomorrow and see if we can come up with a suitable date to move the Planning Commission for November to, in case we do have a meeting, and other than that, the Veterans Memorial, you know, I kind of, as we were going through this and everything, I heard it and listened to it, but now that it's up, you know, it's something that I can't help myself to tell people to go look at, and, you know, felt like an honor to be able to buy some bricks for my grandpa and two of my uncles to put in there, so something that I think we all will be super proud of for years to come, but appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman Collins?
I just wanted to say I had a fantastic time at my first MML conference, and I want to thank Tara for all the work you did to get all of us there. We make it kind of difficult sometimes. I learned a lot, and I really enjoyed getting to know everybody a little bit better, and I want to also thank all of my fellow board members. I heard a lot of horror stories on dysfunctional boards, and the way people have, how their first six months has gone, and I've had a really good experience, so I just want to say thank you to everybody in this room, as it's been a pleasure so far.
That's nice.
So far?
So far.
Budget's coming. Alderman Maro?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city for the opportunity, again, to go to the MML conference. Classes are always very interesting and informative, and certainly fun to meet new city officials. Many thanks to Cochrane Engineering for their wonderful reception that they gave us Sunday night, and also with Ward Two, Alderman Hoffman and myself. Thank you, thank you for Dude Ranch Road and Lazy Days, they look wonderful, they were just resurfaced, and I drove down Lazy Days, I thought, this is heaven compared to what it was. Anyway, good job, and the striping on the parkway, it looks great. I wondered about Osage Beach Road, is that, I haven't gone all the way down, is that complete?
It's on your table, Jeff.
Not yet, we're sort of getting into the punch list phase of that project, so it's been 30, 60 days.
Okay. And the construction workers I saw as of, since we've been back from MML, are working at Oasis. I go by there, and I think, hallelujah. Anyway, go Mizzou and go Chiefs.
What about Dallas?
No.
They, they, they're just not ready this weekend, this weekend. They've already played, and they won.
Alderman Osteen?
I only had two things this evening. I wanted to recognize Devon Lake, our city administrator, and Ron White, our billing official, for their municipal official certifications they received at our annual MML conference. Obviously, we in this room were there and were aware of it, but I just wanted to get that on public record, so those that are watching or listening realize that that is a great, kudos to both of you for receiving that certification, so. And when you receive that, of course, we created a spectacle. Hold your applause at the end, and we hootenalled, and so it was fun. Secondly, which Chief Davis already spoke about, I was going to commend our police department for Bike Fest. It's my understanding that arrests, accidents, and police involvement with issues were down for the city of Osage Beach, not for the entire event, but it was the lowest we've had in a few years in our municipality, so kudos to the police department for that. Other than that, go Bills.
Alderman Hoffman?
So I wasn't here two weeks ago, but I had two separate phone calls that week from constituents, raving about our public works team coming out, whether it was removing trees or fixing something on the road, you know, they, people like to call and complain when things aren't going well, but these people went out of their way to call me and say, man, you've got some great people down there, you've got a great staff that came out and knocked it out, so kudos to Jeff and your team, because it's great getting feedback like that, we don't get it all the time. MML was spectacular, I think this is the best one I've been to. I was lucky enough that the breakouts were, I found very interesting this year, there was just some stuff that really piqued my interest, and was able to attend them with the department heads, which I love, and if I hear, there's one thing I hear up there over and over, is that other cities are just jealous of our camaraderie. For us to have such an impact, all of our department heads, our whole board, our mayor there, you know, other people, other cities just flat out don't have that kind of turnout, you know, and Chief being there, I don't think I've met another chief of police that was up there, I'm sure there were.
Saw one.
One. So, you know, man, that means so much, and people see it, and quite frankly, they're jealous of it when they do, and I'll go one step further with this, our people don't go up there and just sit around, like, and I don't know if it's just because we're from the lake and we're used to being around people all the time, or, but our people are up there, they're engaging, they're asking questions, you know, they're, they're holding court at the bar, whatever it might be. You know, I walk in to get a coffee with Tara, and I can't even have a coffee, because every single person in there knows her and starts talking to her, and I didn't even get to walk into the, into the event with her. So I only see that, in my three years' experience, I've only seen that from Osage Beach people, so kudos to everybody who went. Lastly, this is the In Water Boat Show at Dog Days this week, so if you get an opportunity, this is kind of your last weekend to go have a little fun and check out cool boats, so do so if you can.
Very good. Alderman Barella?
I was just gonna give a little WinFest update, you know, that was a couple weeks ago, but we raised a little over $23,000 from that two-hour event, a couple hundred bucks more than we did the year before, so that's always good, goes to a good cause, and I just want to thank the restaurants and chefs and public for coming out and supporting it.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes, first of all, MML, you know, was, was great. If you didn't take, if you didn't take, take place or didn't participate in the networking that started on Sunday at 3 o'clock and finished up with a meeting Wednesday morning at 8:30, 9 o'clock, when there was a breakout session, and I was sitting with the staff, and we were supposed to be talking about the one takeaway, which I had a takeaway from one of my breakout sessions that I was able to chit chat with the staff about and throw it out to them, and what some things I felt that I learned that we should be doing, and so that was really good to be able to do that, and a lot of sessions in between, even had some networking that was done over to pickleball court, where a 71-year-old guy and a 74-year-old guy got out there and beat the ball around. We didn't play, we beat the ball around, so, so that was great. The other thing I want to bring up is, I know the board has mentioned a couple different times that we need a succession plan for each department, each person. You know what? We have it, because if you just have sat back and just looked at emails, and that's what I have done, and we have a two-person department that decided to have babies, and April, Celine, Torin, I just learned today, Caitlin, is that correct? Caitlin, Caitlin's parks, she's taking care of the health, the health fare, and I'm sure there's, I know Cole and April and Devon have stepped up to take care of some of Maddie's stuff on the diocese. There's your succession plan, it's the staff pulling together, and I know there's other people that are not mentioned here that are doing something or helping out, maybe they're picking up some of the weight for some of these other people. So I'm not worried about a succession plan. Formalize it, okay, but when you have this, this right here, when the auditors ask for it, just give them the, just tell them what happened, just tell them what happened here with all these two ladies all of a sudden, you know, not planning their pregnancies as good as they could, but, you know, they should separate them out there, but anyway, that's okay, we were able to, the team was able to cover it up, and that's, that's, that's kudos to the staff, so we don't need the succession plan, thank you. So we don't need the succession plan. Thank you.
Very good. All right, I just have a few things too, and I'm going to say to MML and for those listening, home is Missouri Municipal League. The reason I say that, I went to a couple of sessions, and both sessions, they were given some acronyms, and they must have said it 40 or 50 times, and I had no idea what they were talking about. So I'm over there Googling PFAS, PFAS, had no idea what it was, so I had to Google what that was. So for those at home, Missouri Municipal League, and that gives municipalities the opportunity to go and, and learn from other municipalities and the experts, how to get together, legal things to do, how you can grow your city, how to work together as a team, and so, yeah, we were, we made a showing. There were 17 of the city of Osage Beach, and I was talking to Devon about it, and we were definitely in force, and everybody saw their names, like, Osage Beach, what do you do? Bring half your town here? And congratulations to Ron and Devon. They said at the very beginning, hold your applause to the end, but everybody else was applauding, but they were just giving up a little applause, but they got to those two, and our two tables went nuts, so. And from that then on, everybody else went nuts too, so it was a treat. Thank you, the city, for letting us go to that. On a side note, Bob, November 20th, I've had the pleasure, and thank you Tara for putting it together, that I'm going to go to the National League of Cities. It's on the national level, so that's, meeting's yours, Bob, November 20th. Just letting you know, I've, I think I've missed one other meeting in the last three years, but this will be the meeting I'm missing, because the National League of Cities is very similar to the Missouri one, but on a national level, so I don't know that mayor's gone to that before, but I'm looking forward to going to that, and I'll bring back what I can, as in Salt Lake City, so I will keep my Trump hat at home. US Disaster, I want to expand a little bit on what Rhonda said too, because with Bike Fest, I was working the cheese store, and I had my appropriate hat on that week, and I had my cutoff shirt, and I was serving drinks at the cheese store, and I get a, a call from Tara, which doesn't happen very often. She knew I was working there, and I couldn't answer right then, and then I get a text, please call as soon as possible. So I call, and she told me about the mini disaster we had here, and so I came up here in my attire that was not my normal mayor attire, met with the US Disaster and Ron and the rest of the crew, and, and you're right, everybody went into action. The liquid, Freon, for lack of a better word, that was all over, was not dangerous, but there was some concerns. So it was about 2:30 in the afternoon, we decided to shut City Hall down and then err on the side of caution, and they, they kind of went into the, the amount that we had assigned for an emergency disaster, and it was of, there's something only I could sign off on, and I asked him, I said, you know, how much overtime? They're going to work on the weekends, and then we got to looking at it, but you know what? It's, it's, it was worth it for the safety, and if we would have left that the way it was all weekend, it was a safety, so it sounds like the insurance company will probably come through for us, but, you know, kudos to the staff and everybody that pitched in, and, and you go back there now, and it's amazing that it, the work they did over the weekend, so. And they even came to Harby's and had sandwiches on Saturday, so thank you, US Disaster. The last thing I'm going to say is the Veterans Memorial, again, I agree with that. You know, I was fighting for that for the last two years to get that thing done. It is so impressive out there, and I'm looking forward, I'm also going to have a brick with my name on there, Hoffman, you should do that too, if you haven't already.
Yeah, I was going to ask, are they done selling bricks, or can you still buy?
I don't believe so. We can get you in.
No, they've got lots.
Okay.
Lots of space.
Yeah, but get it out there, and they are going to have a ribbon cutting on, on Veterans Day, 11:11 to 11 o'clock, and I know City Hall is closed that day, but that is the opportunity, but just keep 11:11 at 11 o'clock, we have ribbon cutting out front, and that's going to be a site to see for visitors and locals for years and years to come, so. Yes, sir.
Could we, and I guess maybe Chief, could, could we make sure that at least the restroom facilities would be available on, around that timeframe since?
Yeah.
10:30 to 11:30?
10:30 to 12?
Sure, that'd be good.
It'd be nice.
Yeah, I agree. That's a good idea.
And Mr. Mayor, that isn't conflict with the parade at all, does it?
No, that'll be the Saturday before.
Oh, the parade's not the same day?
Correct. Parade on the Saturday before, yeah.
I bet.
But yeah, just, good things, I'm glad you brought, brought that up, Carrie, but yeah, thanks to all of the veterans out there, so.
Looks awesome.
Good stuff going on here at Osage Beach. People are recognizing us statewide and nationwide, so thank you to all of you here, so. If there's nothing else, we do have some legal things to attend to, and so at this time, to follow legal procedures, I got to read. Notice is now given that the agenda includes a roll call vote to close a meeting as allowed by RSMO Section 610.021, legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. So do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Alderman Collins, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Brilla? Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Murrell?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Whatever.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned, executive session begin.